And if you please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also those who have passed away in our community, especially Mr. Michael Melnick, who was a former city councilman for 16 years. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Dunham?
Here.
Attorney Dempsey?
Present.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Overman?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as the temporary chair for the Committee on Rules.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so move.
I'd like to make a motion to table item 7F, or 7P, rather, sorry.
Second.
On the question, Ms. Palutus has notified the office that she wishes to withdraw her name as a member of the Ethics Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessor's Results Report, for hearing date held August 28, 2019. 3B City of Scranton Recycling Report dated August 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive and file. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. Now, this will be the last time I make this announcement because the benefit is this Saturday, but there is a benefit that's being held for two of my uncles. It's called Together for the Trentleys, a benefit supporting John and Billy Trentley. Friends and family have planned a benefit for John and Billy Trentley. Both brothers were diagnosed with cancer within two weeks of each other. John has advanced prostate cancer and Billy has multiple myeloma. Together, along with their families, they are facing this battle. The benefit will be this Saturday, September 21st, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at St. Mary's Center in Scranton to help defray the costs of treatments and travel expenses to Sloan-Kettering Hospital in New York City. Tickets are $20 and available at the door. There will be basket raffles, basket of cheer, 50/50, entertainment, food, wine, and beer. Please come out to support two wonderful men and their battle with cancer. Thank you.
I just have one quick one. The City of Scranton Office of Economic and Community Development is preparing their five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, and its analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. As part of the planning process, the city is conducting a survey to identify residents' needs in the community and ideas on what the city residents would like to see funds used for. Please take a few minutes and complete the survey, which can be found at the top of the city's website, scrantonpa.gov. Thank you.
I do have two brief announcements as well. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending this evening. Members of City Council received a letter dated September 6, 2019, from a young girl, age nine. I don't want to give her name or address for privacy reasons, but it says, "Thank you for giving me lots of books to read at the public library. Thank you for making sure I have clean water to drink. Thank you for giving me a park to play in with lots of trees." So we want to thank her for taking the time and for doing her civic duty by sending us a letter, and I want her to know how much we appreciate that letter. The second thing I'd like to announce is this Saturday, I have my pink on, if you notice, it's the Susan B. Coleman Race for the Cure in downtown Scranton. In this city where, and this valley, I should say, where it seems like the diagnosis of cancer is so pervasive and so ubiquitous, anything we can do to eradicate this insidious disease is always helpful. The Susan B. Coleman Foundation has donated over $10 million to breast cancer research and over $25 million to funding of programming in this general area. Their efforts are so significant, and since their inaugural year, it has absolutely, I bet you, more than quadrupled. It has to be 20 times I participated in it, and each time you see it, it just gets larger and larger. One of the final things I'd like to say about that is the unification of the city during this event. It goes out Wyoming and down north Washington, and I'll start to see, as I come to work and go back to work, on Wyoming and North Washington avenues, each of the city, not each and everyone, but most of the city businesses along those ways, the restaurants, the truck and auto centers, the banks and the auto dealerships, and any other smaller business along that route will start to decorate their windows in a show of solidarity for anybody who is either walking in that race fighting breast cancer or walking in that race in general or walking in that race in memoriam of a loved one. So registration still remains open. It's this Saturday. I looked at mine via Facebook, and I was able to register today. So I would encourage everyone who can to participate, and again, breast cancer does not discriminate. It affects men and women alike. And again, I will repeat, and I'm sure there's no one in this audience who has not been affected by cancer in some way or manner, so I'm sure they would appreciate any help we can assist in. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just give some more details on that race. As Attorney Dempsey said, it's going to be September 21st. The Race for the Cure will be held downtown. The race day schedule begins at 6:30 a.m., Courthouse Square with the 5K Run beginning at 8:30 a.m. and the Walk beginning at 8:45. Please be mindful of any potential road closers and the safety of runners and walkers as you are traveling throughout the downtown area on Saturday. And also, just a reminder for the speakers tonight, just to state their name for the record before they speak. That's all I have. So with that, we'll go into fourth order, and our first speaker tonight is Joan Honewanis.
Joan Honewanis, city resident and taxpayer. I was really pleased to sit on tonight's caucus before the meeting. I've sat in, I think, the vast majority of them over the last several years, and guess who came to the caucus? It was Mayor Evans. And the mayor has not been, prior mayor, had not been a frequent attendee, and I was just very impressed to see him sit there and answer questions on the pending legislation for tonight's agenda and what he was looking at, you know, down the road, and I think that's a very good and healthy thing for the city, so I hope that continues. Couple of the issues that came up during the caucus reminded me to remind you that the business administrator and the administration should be deep into the 2020 budget preparations, and nobody likes to see taxes go up, but it's a fact of life that costs and expenses usually go up every year, even if revenues don't go up a matching amount. Couple of things, you know, that got discussed in the caucus, you know, obviously, one was the Ethics Board, which is a new board, and it's going to have to be funded. The possibility of maybe another grant writer for the city, which, you know, is a budget item, but that grant writer would probably pay for himself or herself, maybe additional personnel in LIPS if the study, you know, determines that LIPS is understaffed, whatever. So I hope, you know, you may have to make some very hard choices because you don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish as you do the budget. Another reason I mention this is the recent article in the paper, Trouble Bubbles Up at Na'og Pool, where the liner, which was 18-years-old, went kaput. So now the park, if it's going to have any swimming next year, is going to need a new lining, and that's going to cost money. But one of the systemic problems the city has, at least in my opinion, is that we do not properly budget for long-term maintenance issues, whether it's Na'og Park or the other parks, whether it's City Hall with its $10.7 million renovation projection, whether it's the firehouses, which over the years have had a number of emergency roof repairs and other issues. This is what I mean when I say you don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish as you go into the budget process. There's nothing very sexy about earmarking money for long-term maintenance and other capital issues, but if you don't do it, you're going to have another City Hall issue. You're going to have another, where we're going to go swimming if we can't go to Na'og next summer. This is not higher math. We should know how long, you know, roofs last and swimming pool liners last and what it costs to maintain a 19th-century building like this, which is on the historical register. We need to belly up to the bar and allocate those funds, or we're going to pay through the nose down the road, and that's not fair to the taxpayer. So somehow, you've got to explain such cost increases, and good luck. I was disturbed by the article in the paper about Turnkey, the dispute between Turnkey and Bill Fox and the Scranton Single Tax Office. It kind of had a lot of echoes of what we were complaining about with northeast revenues. I hope during fifth order, if you could, talk about that, and are we getting gypped with Turnkey? The only thing I hear from Turnkey before this was seeing their name on the controller's report every month as they get paid, so I'd like to see that. A big thank you to everybody in the city who supported the Scranton Public Library book sale. It was our best sale ever. We made almost $6,000. That's pre-tax. 6% goes to the tax man. And the only other thing is, in the future weeks, I want to talk and ask why the city does not have a written hiring policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight will be Bob Bowles.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, I'd like to echo Joan on Na'og Park. I'll get into that in a moment. First off, the city is talking about collecting, sending the taxes to Lackawanna County. I firmly believe that the taxes should be done within the city of Scranton. We should have our own tax collector. We have our own law department. We should do it in-house. If you pay attention to Lackawanna County, the tax collector is also their solicitor, and I was in Superior Court with him this past week. So he represents the tax claim, and he's the tax collector. It's one hell of a way to fill your pot. It's something we don't need, and we don't need it in Scranton. We've had enough corruption, enough game-playing here. We need to tell the people the truth of what we're doing here, and those are my recommendations that we do that. The other part, I asked last week, did anybody bother to make a motion to disband the Na'og Recreation Park Authority or whatever it's called? Was there ever a motion put on the table for that? Okay, let me be very clear. Tomorrow at 1 o'clock, there's a hearing regarding Na'og Park before Judge Gibbons. I filed an injunction to stop the ridiculous sale of our asset to Guy Senger that's for pennies for parking in 280 parking spaces. You get $100,000 a year, 10 years, you get $1 million. Where do you park for under a dollar anywhere in this community? It's supply and demand. We have the supply, they have the demand for parking. We should be getting at least the price of a $5 cheeseburger, which will bring in over $500,000 a year. You're crying about the pool. Everybody look like a bunch of idiots in the papers, standing up there, looking at a destroyed liner. Those pools have been leaking for years, yet nobody bothered to do it because they don't have the expertise nor did they look for it, and that's why we got a problem. So I'm asking you guys to disband this authority. They're incompetent, unfortunately. They didn't go the right way. They're not even looking for outside bids to repair the pool. Those pools were concrete pools. You don't even need a liner in them if you do it right, if you pay any attention on putting concrete in pools. We could save hundreds of thousands of dollars. We could use that extra money from Guy Senger to repair here, help eliminate the garbage tax. There are so many different things we could do, but we got to stop this recreation authority from doing it. Priority would be Na'og Park out of the money. The money didn't get escrowed here, and it's done publicly where the dispersment is. It doesn't go into the black hole in the city of Scranton. These are assets. We gave Southside away. What do we get? A tax-free bank from the university? Well, I have questions about what they supported, and I've already brought up that there's tax exemptions should be revoked because of what I brought up in the past about who they supported. It's the House of God, and they got to follow the rule of God, and they don't do that, and they didn't do that in the past with a candidate that's running here. Okay? So those are the things that affect this city and affect our moral, our religious, and our principles and values that we have in this city, and you guys got to start standing up for it. And, you know, I come here, I've been coming here for years, and it doesn't seem that we're going anywhere. We had the issue with the mayor. We have an issue coming up. Disband the authority, put control back between council and the mayor you have in this city, and do what's right for the people for once and for all. Stop giving the damn assets away, and that's what we're doing. Mr. Dunham, in all personal, you're going to run for mayor in the city. I'd like to see you at that hearing tomorrow. If you want to run the city, pay attention where our money's gone down the toilet and stand up for the people in this city. Come to the meeting, come to the hearing, and defend against us giving Guy Senger a free ride up there and put a million dollars a year in here that'll fix the pools, fix the buildings, take care of our senior citizens with maybe a heating contract. There are many things that could happen with the money, but you guys got to stand up for it. I'm only one person, one citizen here, but this is why I'm here tonight, to come forward, take care of the pool. It'll look like hell up there, but it's been leaking a long time. Novembrino, they closed. The other pools, they closed. You're screwing the people in the city with incompetence, and I say that very clear. And if anybody questions that, come here and challenge me. I could prove to you what they're doing with the pool is wrong. I know about pools. I know about engineering, and I know about getting competitive bids, and we're not doing that. We're right back to the old school of business, if you allow it to happen. Be at the hearing tomorrow. Protect the people in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Fay Frannis.
Fay Frannis. Mr. Gahn and councilman in the city, I just wanted to commend the DPW extremely. They are a wonderful bunch of guys. My neighbor had a problem with her curb. It hasn't been replaced like in 20-some years, and the cars that parked, they were hitting her sidewalk and breaking it all up as well. I mentioned this to Chris Jenkins, the foreman, who was fantastic on a Wednesday. On Thursday, he and his crew came over, and it was done. I gave you a picture of how beautiful it came out, and my neighbor was, she was at work, so she couldn't be there, so she was absolutely thrilled. It was like Christmas for her. She keeps on looking at it. She can't get over how nice it is, and I just wanted to say thank you very, very much to the DPW and Chris Jenkins. They were fabulous. Okay, a couple of things I want to address. You have an ordinance today for the quality of life. I hope you put in there that there should be a warning, not giving someone a ticket. Is that going to happen?
Do you want me to answer now?
Pardon me? I just want to know, yes or no, are you going to have a warning?
Yes, there is a warning.
Okay. Now, another thing. Come January, I hope you change these meetings from Monday to a weeknight, so we don't get like nine or 10 or 15 holidays a year and never replace those. So there's no excuse, because Mr. Perry's going to be gone now. So that was the reason we had the meetings on Monday. So we absolutely have to have it on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, but no more Mondays, okay? Now, another thing, the bell ringing. Half the people don't know that when that bell rings, there's still 30 more seconds, so they just walk away. So that's just a way of assuring people time to speak. I think that should be eliminated. Now, I want to talk about the garbage fee. Is that going to be $300 in the budget this year? You have an obligation to the people, because that's probably illegal, as we know. I've been fighting this for years. You should bring it down to 178, the way it used to be. Are you considering that, or you still want it 300 a year, which is totally nuts? Okay, Bill, we do address that. Ms. Dempsey, we do address that in motions. I also wanted to ask you, is there any way possible you can meet with myself and Marie someday to go over this garbage fee, because what you were talking about last week about making the people, instead of the liens, go to court? Pardon me? Okay. Now, here's another thing. You mentioned, like I think you said, going after the people with the most money due, which makes sense, but let me tell you something. As far as the general people in the neighborhood, I myself have five people in my block that haven't paid it, and they probably owe like $3,000, $2,000. So they're not the kind of people you're going to be going after. But the people in Scranton, like myself, are sick and tired of paying for their neighbors' garbage, so I really think you should consider going after the regular people, because there's more of them than there is of the big ones. I came here with a list of 15, I got a landlord that had 15 properties one night. Sure, you should go after him, but I think you should concentrate on sending the neighbors, the regular people, send them the quarry, and you will get much more money. Just five people in my block alone. And how do you think we feel when they see six cans and something, we're not, I have one can, and they, I'm paying for them? It gets you a little frustrated, so that's something I really want to see happen. Now, another thing, all due respect to Joan Honewanis in saying about she should have been on council and stuff like this. Did anybody forget that Marie Schumacher is alive and well and has spoken to council for the last years and years and years and knows more about the city than any one of you up there? And I personally don't think you want her up there because you probably figure she knows too much, and you don't want her finding out anything more, because she'd have the right to do it. So you really slipped on that one, really, really, really big time. You wanted good advice, you could have had it with Marie. Now, what are we going to do about the budget? There's no audit? How do you have a budget without an audit? I don't know. Silence, silence, silence. And so I want you to address that, too. Are you going to consider definitely having a meeting not on Monday nights anymore?
That's something that we'll have to discuss, you know, during the reorganization.
But it shouldn't even be a discussion.
Right. But we have to get input from the five members to see when they can meet.
Okay, but I hope you say definitely not Mondays.
Well, I can't say definitely not Mondays, because I have to, you'd have to confer with four other people.
Well, there's something going on if you're going to have Mondays off again. Now, if that's the case, if you're going to have Mondays off again, then you should have the meeting another night during the week, because that's what the law says.
I agree.
And I just want Avoca, they have per bag, and if there's not a sticker on the bag, the garbage men don't pick up the garbage. How about that? They do it in Avoca and Durie, but we can't do it.
Where was that? Avoca?
Avoca. Marie Schumacher found this out, and I believe Durie, too. And we have, Ms. Dempsey, we have a law of city administrative code. I don't know if you've seen it. It says the DPW has a right not to pick up the garbage if they don't pay the garbage fee. You say it's a health hazard. Well, it's not a health hazard in Avoca.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Elman.
Yeah, thank you, council. The honeymoon's over, huh? Yeah. Well, I got a suggestion for some future candidates. Go up to Kaiser Oak to get names. In two afternoons, I got over 50. That's a couple of weeks ago, and I imagined that they were all good, because they seemed like intelligent people, knew where they lived, except one guy, he signed the petition, then asked me if I knew Frank Scaville. I said, yes, sir. He said, he lives near me. They tell you they're from here and live here and vote here. It's an achievement to get 212 names for some people, I'll tell you. Ms. Dempsey, if I may, I would like to ask one favor of you. That's that you remember that your allegiance should be to the people of this city and not to the machine that's been running it year after year after year. Now, the first thing I noticed tonight was, when I opened this up, was the property code. On 126 and 128 West Troop Street, there is a pure piece of garbage destroying my neighborhood, and nobody seems to care. I phoned, months ago, I phoned Mr. Hittin' six times, and he never once answered my call. He got junk cars in the back that don't run. Today, he moved this great big school bus in. It's huge, between 126 and 128. And 128, the lady died a year or so ago. The house has absolutely fallen apart, and there's some guy comes and goes in, and I don't know the story, but it certainly should be condemned. When she was living there, it should have been condemned. It's a bad piece of property. You know, I guess it was two years ago, this lunatic said I fell through my garage roof and phoned Mr. Sweeney. He come right out there. God, it was before lunchtime. He asked me what happened. That's how things should be, maybe not that quick, but I've phoned and phoned and phoned about this man. He got New Jersey license plates. He'd been here for years with his old car. Nobody seems to care. He lived on Wayne Avenue, you know? And real quick, I know we're going to be in this building in my lifetime, and I'd like to see a break room for the employees with some vending machines and so forth and named after Jimmy Klee. That man spent half his life in this very building, and I don't think anybody could find an ill word to say about him. And I forgot the, I think it was on Madison Avenue, the university bought a piece of property last week, $475,000. How many of us have to pay more in our taxes to cover this? When is it going to end? You guys got to do something about these nonprofits. They are just destroying the city. They're not helping it. I read this article about Mr. Vogt patting himself on the back how great he was. That was then. He gets a big salary being a college president, and he's not helping the city. He's bought pieces of property all over downtown, and they're off the payroll forever. You know, as far as I'm concerned, to hell with these people. They are just, they're not Scrantonians. They are destroying the city's tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start tonight by asking who of you or who is going to be representing the taxpayers of the city of Scranton, the residents, actually, tomorrow night at the Dunmore City Council meeting? Is the mayor going? Is anybody from here going? And if you could hold it, I do have a lot, but I would, I'm hoping somebody's going. We've got, you know, we've got seagulls that eat all that stuff and then come over to Lake Scranton, our reservoir, and spend the night and poop in our water, and it's drinking water. Leachate runs through Green Ridge, and, well, enough said, but I think we deserve to be represented tomorrow night. And then traffic. I've made prior complaints about living on a passway for people who are coming down 307 and going on to ride anyone. There was a sign there that said, no traffic except for local deliveries, and our babysitter here cleaned it up for me and told me that somebody put it up, but it's not a law because it never came before city council. So I would like to know how I do go about contacting my neighbors on Seymour and East Mountain Road, because now they've made it official. There are two 81 South markers on East Mountain Road. Those trucks have not done any good for it. We get the noise. We get all the dust that we didn't used to have. This is not what it should be, and I'd like to know who is responsible for those 81 signs. And then follow-up on last week, are we going to be able to continue mixing corrugated cardboard in with our paper, or is that, are we included with Troop in the recycling center rejecting that kind of recycling? I would like to know that. I'm sure somebody's followed up on it. I'm sure somebody's followed up on it. And what have we done, again, in, in motions? What have we done to collect those delinquent trash bills? And is the list being updated if people pay or is that a static document? I do check it once in a while and it doesn't seem to make any changes to me, and I'm sure we've had some payments, so I would like to know about that. And, and I did contact County Waste to ask them what their policies are. They bill monthly, and if people don't pay, and I'm not going to divulge what, how many months it is, but they do give people some leeway if they don't pay because they realize we're all human and we all have problems from time to time. But after a certain period of time, they stop collecting. And so I think we should follow suit. Somebody should sit down with County Waste and see how they do it, and if they can do it, I don't see why the city DPW can't do the same thing. Then, there were a couple, I don't know if you read all of the, the legal notices, but there were two in the paper that just left me shaking my head, and I'm still shaking it even after talking to some people. They are requests for proposals, and it says essentially, there will be a bid conference and you must go to the bid conference if you, to get the bid package. And it tells when that meeting is, but it doesn't tell you what the work is. Now, is any business person going to say, oh, that sounds interesting? Why don't I go over there? Maybe I want to bid on that project? It's not in here, and there are two of them. If you don't, haven't seen it, I'll bring it up here later and you can take a look at it. It, all it says to me, it screamed at me, we've already picked our winner, so nobody else has to bother coming. That's exactly what it says to me when you don't tell people what the bid is. And then Attorney Dempsey, last week you said you had reviewed the, the preliminary budget. Does it have a property tax increase in it?
As is preliminary, I, I don't really know right now, to be candid with you. I don't know.
And then on the, one of the things tonight is about taking money that's in an escrow account for rental registration and moving it over to the, if I can finish this one, I'll bring the rest next week, moving it over to the beautiful neighborhoods or something. I don't think that's right. I mean, those people who paid, overpaid on the rental registration, I think it should reduce the rental registration fee for next year and go seek some other grants for the other project. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the names on the sign-in sheet. Is there anybody else that would like to address council tonight?
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is, you know, the Ethics Commission. You know, I just, I, I know that there are some residents in the city who are going to be on that board, but it's, it's morals and conduct. I mean, you know, it's, I just don't understand the whole theory behind that because if the residents in the city think that's going to solve any of their problems, they're out of their mind. You know, we need a commission that's going to figure out how to cut property taxes in this city and stop the bleed. All the ethics, there isn't, there, there is no ethics in government. If there were any ethics in government, the city wouldn't be borrowed into debt as far as it is and just keeps borrowing. I noticed the ad in the newspaper that Marie talked about, you know, it's just, it's just a situation where government has no regard for the people that, you know, they allegedly serve. And it's not just here, it's all the way up through the federal government. And I don't know if it's ever going to change. I think it will, but I don't think it's going to change in the ballot box. And the big debate that's taking place about the Naog Pool, you know, the thing I don't understand is why doesn't the recreational authority have that money? I just, for the life of me, can't understand why they aren't in possession of every dime necessary to repair that pool. They've been selling passes for the pool for how long? Making deals for parking at Naog? I mean, you know, when, when you talk about ethics in government, you know, look at authorities because the reason to create authorities is because you elect people who have no idea how to run anything. So you create an authority and let them run it. I mean, look what happened to the Scranton Sewer Authority. I mean, it's almost asinine, to be real honest with you. It probably is asinine, but you know, I mean, you just have to see it for what it really is. You know, and this condemnation, you know, I think we need to look at where we're taking this city. We're talking about a walkability study for downtown Scranton when there's just a host of condemned properties and vacant lots throughout the city. And we're, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe this council and the mayor think that, hey, more green space. We could go the way of Detroit. If we tear enough of the city down, we could sell farmland. I mean, it's beyond ridiculous. And the weight levels, I mean, look at, if this, if this city government wants to do something, I think it needs to partner with the Scranton School District and maybe we have an attorney with some kind of degree that would volunteer their time and go sue the state. Because the Constitution's clear on who should be funding education. Okay? And I think that a mayor in the city and the council should be concerned with the fact that we're closing elementary schools throughout neighbor, throughout neighborhoods and, you know, slashing, well, not, I won't use the terminology slashing because the pre-K program was really small, but every child in this city should have pre-K, every single one. I mean, if we have a mayor down in the mayor's office, he need, he should have already started this stuff. I mean, but I think we're allowing politics to, to run everything. And to be honest with you, people don't move their children into, into cities without schools. And you know, when, as you continually pound the hell out of this Scranton School District and all the rest of them, because the state legislature created pensions and all kinds of stuff they never funded, and then you just hand it to the taxpayers and say, here, you pay it. And then you have a situation where the city, you know, don't forget, we built parking garages. We had a mayor here that bragged that we had, you know, we had cranes on the skyline. I mean, and then we, we allegedly couldn't run them, but a nonprofit took them and they hired a for-profit company to run them. It's just amazing. And we're going to talk about ethics in government? You know, the one thing people need to realize is, the laws in the law book, they don't belong to the judge. They don't belong to lawyers. They belong to the people. And I'd say that I'd recommend that people pick up a law book someday and start filing stuff. You'll learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anyone else like to address council tonight?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Hey, anybody follow international politics, like the Brexit thing in parliament? You know, I was going to suggest that Patty should learn to yell, "Order!" Just a little joke. Okay, once again, on City Hall, I will judge candidates for offices and I'd like to start hearing people pushing for it by their initiative on the $5 million historical grant for the restoration of City Hall. It's about time we get our fair share here. And last week, nasty letter was in the paper and I commented on it. Apparently Senator Blank is a little more on our side on the school, school services, giving taxes out, distributions, because the person was fired. Well, I kind of feel sorry for him, but he should, should have considered before he passed City of Scranton that, in the school district, that we have thirty percent, thirty-six percent non-tax exempt, non-taxable buildings. So that's a huge chunk, and I would say that the average person doesn't really have any money to pay any extra unless you maybe won the lottery, and it better be a big one. And once again, on security on City Hall, what I was speaking of was that all offices that are high traffic should be moved to the first floor, and that would reduce the amount of necessity to have a heavy police presence or several police officers present to provide security. And the low-volume offices where there's very little people in and out could be moved possibly to the fourth floor and some other security measures. I'm a little bothered about Naog Public Pool, too. I wasn't a fan of the Splash Park. It's not exercise. One of the things in our society is we have people walking around that are probably 50% heavier than what they really should be. And I've noticed with various public events, I mean, years back, the mayor's Music Fest went down the tubes and morphed into something else, which is a big paper play thing, and our first night went down the tubes. Basically, the only thing we have left is the Italian Festival and the Scrantastic Celebration. And hopefully, you know, we, we can start to revive some of these things if you really want to have a, a community appreciation of any type. And probably the first night was overdone, there were too many venues at first, and then it shrunk down to nothing and just faded away. And on these contracts with outsourcing, is there anything in these contracts that would void the contract in the case of misconduct? Because this, this company that collects our, our taxes and, and the back trash fees, I mean, you know, they, they walked away scot-free and they were handing out bribes. I regard the briber as more worse than the person that takes the bribe. You know, we have a mayor that's facing jail time now and it's probably, here, here's your, here's a few for your election. Here, take a couple extra, and then when it gets caught, it gets all turned around. He's a big bad bully and he was extorting money out of me, you know, and it's not right. I really am disturbed with Cordero and Munchak and now this. Nobody's seeing any jail time except the politician that accepted the money. And with the Citizens United decision, it's like truckloads are just flung at elections and we all know why. We know why. And finally, this walkability and bicycling study downtown, my only concern about it is I certainly hope that it's not people diving out in front of my car if I have business downtown. And, you know, maybe at night in the evening, it got a lot of lights if they have proper illumination, but it took me about eight minutes or 10 minutes to get from Jefferson Avenue to City Hall the other day. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Would anyone else like to address council?
Esteemed counsel, distinguished guests and viewers at home.
Mr. St. Flur, would you, for the record, just say your name, please?
I will state my name. My name is Gary St. Flur. I'm a mayor candidate for the special election on November 5th. And it's with this in mind that I made an inquiry into our budget to see what I'll be facing if I do assume office. Looking at the numbers by themselves, it's hard to get an actual grasp of what they mean because unless you make comparisons, it's hard to evaluate, are we the most efficient? Are we the most effective? Are we doing right by citizens? In real estate and in finance, we attempt to find a model to compare an enterprise to in order to make assessments. It's with this in mind that I took a chance to look at municipalities in Pennsylvania, and I found one that's very similar to Scranton. That, that municipality is Bethlehem. I also took liberty of printing out the budget of both Bethlehem and Scranton to make comparisons for the city council and for anyone else who's interested. What I find was very interesting, Scranton has a population size of roughly 76, 77,000 people, Bethlehem, 75,000. You would think that the budget would be quite comparable, but instead what you find is that Bethlehem's budget is 78 million, whereas Scranton's recent budget is 110 million. That is 32 million more to run the city of Scranton. Now, of course, the obvious question is, why does it cost so much to run Scranton? Especially in a time where property values are plummeting, property taxes are rising, the school district is raising taxes, we have one of the highest wages taxed in the area. And I want to know what's driving these costs. If there's a municipality that is similar to Scranton that's able to get its budget down to 78 million, shouldn't we be able to do the same exact thing? Now, I believe that as public servants and officials, it's in your interest to peer into this and figure out exactly what's going on. Where are these costs coming from? How is it that Bethlehem can have the same population size and have their budget to be almost a third lower than ours? And if there's a chance that we can find some efficiencies and we can learn something from them, we should adopt these things and pass it so we can pass all these savings to the taxpayers who are struggling. I talk to them regularly and they, the constant theme is that they're struggling to keep their homes, they're struggling to find employment because businesses, they clear this area, whereas they go to Taylor or surrounding boroughs because it's more congenial for them. And I believe that it's in all our interests because we're all on the same page. And if we have an opportunity to do right by the people we serve, we should do so. Thank you for listening and have a great night.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight? No, Fifth Order? Oh, sorry, Ms. Jeffries.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm on the other side of the floor. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And one of the things about life is that I want to hear the truth. And I was not prepared to speak tonight, but I enjoy Naog Park Pool. I swam there this summer and they're right about the lining and everything. But when you speak about it, please speak the truth. So I'm up here tonight to say, the park is great and some of the things that you may hear was not the truth. You know, there were bids put out on that. I don't know all the particulars, I'm just a participant at the meetings that I go to. So that's one thing I wanted to say. The other thing I was, I didn't do my homework on this one, so you'll have to help me. I ran the paper about Scranton tomorrow and they're putting up flags around the city. And I thought, who are they? And then I thought back, I know that you guys gave them some kind of a budget, some money that was given to them. Who are they accountable to? When is their meeting? Is, are their meetings open to the public? And if they are, I plan on going to the meetings because I just needed to know, who are they? Why did they vote on flags when I've been talking about street signs for how long? And I just wondered, where do they meet? And I, and that's what I want to know tonight because I'd like to join them in their meetings as they have their discussions. And I don't know if it's public, open to the public or not, but maybe you can help me. Okay?
Mrs. Jeffries, I don't believe their, I don't think their meetings are public. Mrs. Reed? No? No. They're, they're a nonprofit. We usually have had Leslie Collins, who's the executive director, she had been coming in every quarter, I think, to give us an update on the activities. I'm sure we can ask her to, to come in again and give us an update in a caucus, and we'll reach out to you and let you know that. But I'm sure they'd be happy to have you involved and... But I'm sure they'd be happy to have you involved and, you know, Leslie Collins is more than open to how they spend the money and what activities they do.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers like to address counsel tonight?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes. Real quick, Ms. Schumacher, I understand your frustration with the signs for 81 on East Mountain Road, so Ms. Reed, would we be able to send a request to PennDOT to see who put those signs up? And then also with the cardboard recycling? I have some questions that I'm putting together on that too, but I think that requirement was pushed back till at least January 6th where we won't have to meet that requirement until then. I'd like to also just start off by thanking the Creer Technology Center Culinary Arts Program and Chef Mark McAndrew for hosting their 7th Annual First Responders Recognition Luncheon last week up at the Creer Technology Center. For members of the Scranton Police and Fire Departments, all culinary students did a tremendous job prepping and serving lunch while also giving thanks to the first responders who serve our community. I also received complaints at a neighborhood meeting this week from neighbors regarding a property at 508 Tioga Avenue concerning a large amount of lumber in the yard coming way, all the way out to the street and also old oil drums on the property, both of which the neighbors believe are potential fire hazards. So Ms. Reed, would you be able to pass along those complaints to the Lips Department as well as the Fire Inspector? And one thing I did forget to mention last week, but the house at 1218 Oliver Place that Mr. and Mrs. LeBroski brought to our attention at our last meeting in July before council's recess was demoed on Saturday, September 7th. Also last week, council received an update on the status of the new Novembreno Splash Pad and Recreation Area. Construction on that bill, on the building should be completed by the end of the year and the splash pad should be finished by June 1st of next year. On Friday, Mayor Evans and myself met with representatives of the school district, including Acting Superintendent Mrs. McTiernan, Chief Recovery Officer Candace Finan, Business Manager Pat Laffey, School Directors Barb Dixon, Katie Gilmartin and Tom Schuster, to restart discussions on potential areas where the city and school district can share services. Since there's been a change in leadership in both the city and the school district, both the mayor and district leadership are committed to developing a working relationship between those two entities. Topics of discussion included unifying the discount period for property taxes amongst the city, school district and county, a hub test for nonprofits, potential areas for joint purchasing, technology initiatives, grant writing, and also the painting of crosswalks at intersections with school crossing guards. Councilman Gahan and myself will continue to provide updates as we continue to move through this process. And I'll save the rest of my comments for agenda items, so that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Attorney Dempsey, any motions or comments tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Just a few comments consistent with what we spoke about with Ms. Jeffries. I did want to thank Scranton Tomorrow for putting those banners in downtown Scranton. Most of them, I think, are up right now and they run from Lackawanna Avenue to Mulberry Street and Franklin Avenue to Jefferson Avenue and they really look nice. I'm not sure the process by which they decided them or came up with the theory or the dynamic behind them, but they really are beautiful. There's one outside my office, so I would like to thank them for their efforts and I think thus far, everything I've seen them do, they've been a great partner with the city. I spoke to Mr. Bolzoni this morning on the budget and he had told me that that is moving along accordingly and in accordance with his schedule. The P E L has requested that we have that to them no later than October 18th and I think additional emails were just sent out to all the departments today asking for figures and formulas so that that can be worked on and put in. That's why I hesitated to answer the question that was presented to me before, these are still working documents. And what I've learned in the law is if you give an answer on a working document, you're probably doing yourself a disservice until a final document is provided. I also asked on the status of the audit, I believe someone had mentioned that last week and quite frankly, I had the same question. And I was advised that we do have a new audit team this year, Jones Kahansky, Kahansky. I do understand that has led to somewhat of a delay in getting some of the data and that unlike the previous auditor we had who had a three-year term, so in the second and third year of the term, all they had to do was type in data and everything was set up for them. This one may take a little bit longer than we expected. Ms. Hodowanitz, you had asked about whether I think additional data was going to be provided to them in light of what happened with the political corruption. I think the initial answer that I got right for right now is no. I believe they're going to be working with the data that they had. If any additional data is received by council or the mayor or the administration at any later date, we can certainly amend that or change that or ask for a more detailed audit in accordance with our council rules. Mr. Donahue and I attended a meeting with the Green Ridge neighbors and they expressed a concern to me that I'm going to ask that we send a letter to the Department of Parks and Recreation, more specifically Mr. Fallon. We did a cleanup of Pretzel Park out in Green Ridge about two weeks ago and I really think it's a relatively simple solution, but they're very large lights and they need bulbs and that the outlets, most of them, if not all of them, were not working. So we would ask that those be rectified or fixed. The neighbors do like to put holiday decorations out there. I also did receive an oral request from one of the principals out in that area as well about crosswalks and quite frankly, as I'm moving more about the city and talking to different neighbor groups, I do think crosswalks are an issue we want to speak about more. So I've asked them to put that into writing and once that's put into writing, we'll follow up on it more. There's two private schools out in Green Ridge and there's also a public school, Robert Morris, and I'm actually going to drive around tomorrow night and try and see which ones need to be clarified or just made brighter for most instances because there are, as in all neighborhoods, young kids. If there's any other issues on those in other neighborhoods that people want to speak to me on, I'd be happy to listen to them. And finally, last week, I reached out to other neighborhood groups that might want to speak to me. I did hear from the Plott Neighborhood Group. I'll be meeting with them later this month and I'm also going up to the Hill section to meet with them as well. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gahan, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes. First, I just want to send my thoughts and prayers out to the family of Mike Melnick. I had the opportunity on several occasions to talk to Mr. Melnick, who was a councilman in the city for 16 years and he was also friends with my parents. To be a councilman in this city for 16 years, I think, is an unbelievable feat. He was a dedicated public servant and he was just an all-around nice person with a big heart who had a lot of friends because of his personality and the way he was able to talk to people, as if he was talking to them and not at them. So that was one of his great qualities. So again, I want to send my thoughts and prayers out to his family and I'm glad that this council recognized him earlier in the meeting. I would like to make a motion now that city council send a letter to the Licensing and Inspections Department asking for a plan of action to deal with the blighted property at 342 Harrison Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I was on the phone earlier today with a resident who lives right next door to this property. I am trying to fight on behalf of the neighbors here. I was out at this property about two months ago. I know that the Licensing and Inspections Department was out there, so they're not ignoring the problem. The homeowner apparently cut the grass, but this property is literally, in my opinion, falling apart. The neighbors who live next door are afraid if anything happens in terms of a fire that their house would also go up as well and they really should not have to live next to this property in this condition any longer. So I would just ask, as I made the motion, that the Licensing and Inspections Department come up with some sort of plan of action to deal with this property once and for all. And by the way, just to add, this property, no one has lived in this home for 25 years. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Pose. Eyes have it, so move.
I'd also like to make a motion to send a letter to Police Chief Carl Graziano and the Scranton School District Superintendent, alerting them of an issue with speeding and parking issues on Parrot Avenue, which is in front of West Granton Intermediate School. I'd like to ask them for an assessment of the situation and also what safety measures may be implemented to solve this problem.
There's a motion on the floors, there's a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On the question?
Yes, I have been in contact with this resident and I know several of the other neighbors are concerned about this issue as well. A few weeks ago, we received a complaint, the DPW was quick to act on it and they put up children at play signs. Unfortunately, this did not solve the problem. So I just want to take a second and read into the record the, an email I received from this resident late this afternoon. "We moved to this residence on Parrot Avenue three years ago. I'm very concerned with the speeding that takes place on this road. Many people use this as a shortcut through this side of the city to avoid traffic lights. However, they speed very quickly in both directions. My children, as well as the neighborhood children, play football, baseball and kickball across the street. They ride their bikes and enjoy the neighborhood as children should. It is a school zone and there is no reason people should be flying up the street after stopping at the stop sign at Parrot and Fellow Street. Myself and other neighbors are very concerned for our children's safety. Dismissal from the West Granton Intermediate School is an even larger issue. Children walk out in front of the road, cars parked to pick children up and the traffic goes very quickly around the cars." She mentions that two slow children at play signs were installed and she also put up a large flag on her property alerting cars not to speed. No one pays attention to these signs. So hopefully, this letter that's sent to the police chief and the superintendent, they will come up with some sort of plan of action, maybe to install additional safety measures to take care of that issue. Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it, so move.
Thank you. I received from a resident on East Mountain, several complaints up there. So one of them was on East Mountain Road, they would like to have the edge on the right-hand side heading to Engine 10 trimmed. When they trim, they ask if the trimmings could be picked up and not left behind, they end up covering the catch basins. Also, Mountain Lake Road on East Mountain needs to be trimmed, the bushes are so high that residents cannot see animals and other things that run out into the road. So we did receive a response from Mr. Gallagher, the DPW Director, and he informed council that the brush hog is out of service for multiple repairs, some of which are safety concerns. So that is an issue. We did not get an idea of when that might be back in service, but I just wanted to make sure that the resident is aware of that. Also, Mrs. Jeffries had, has asked several times for an update on the street sign program. So I just want to read an email that we received again from the DPW Director. Gene Reed and Dave Medici, who are the two employees in the sign department in the city, by the way, we only have two employees in the sign department, they have been trained. Harry Baker, who is the Vice President of KS Engineering, who was the company that worked with the DPW to implement this plan, worked with both employees for three days in the field. There is a very large inventory, as you could imagine and you have pointed out on several occasions, of poor signs to be addressed. And again, I reiterate that there is only a two-person crew to do this. In addition to street signs, stop signs, do not enter signs, one-way signs and other safety-related signs are a priority. There were several of them that were identified as needing to be replaced. The two employees in this department plan on using a bi-weekly sweep in different areas of the city, two weeks in Southside, two weeks in North Scranton, so on and so forth. Whatever they can accomplish in two weeks in that part of the city with safety signs and intersection signs, they will. He asks us to please remember that they are a two-man crew, this is another job given to them along with their existing duties that they perform daily. Since its inception, this program's inception, they've had to work through some technology glitches, they were without service, they have iPads that they have to type into, that sense has been taken care of. Everything that they upgrade, any signs, stop signs, street signs, go into a database that is saved. So we are keeping that data as we move forward, which I don't think to this magnitude had been done before. So that is the update on the street sign. So if you have any other questions, just let me know. But I do want to say I appreciate both Mr. Reed and Mr. Medici for all the work that they do. They do really care about the city and they are doing a great job. Also, on that DPW vein and city vehicle fleet that we've been talking about and that has been in the newspaper over the last few weeks, I had floated an idea to the administration about two weeks ago in regards to installing GPS on city vehicle, all city vehicles for that matter. As I mentioned last week, many other municipalities do this on a regular basis so that they can track where the vehicles go and then if we're talking about snow plowing and other things, it becomes very transparent because the residents can actually go on the website and see where the snow plows have been. So I was very pleased to learn through Mr. Bolzoni, the business administrator, that there is a meeting set for next week, which Mrs. Reed will attend in our absence or anyone else who wants to attend can go to that. But it is on the GPS, its functionality and the cost. So we may have an update on that in the near future. And I, finally, I just also want to thank, as was mentioned, Mayor Evans came to our caucus tonight and coincidentally, I had several questions on the legislation that we have on our agenda. But Mr. Evans came, answered the questions and, I mean, that's really the way that I think this should operate and should have operated for a long time. So I appreciate Mayor Evans coming, clearing some things up, clarifying some things with the legislation and as he mentioned before he left, he will be back when we do have legislation on our agenda that needs further clarification. So again, I just want to thank him and thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. I just have two quick things. The first thing is I'll share some information that I have to Mr. St. Flure. I know you discussed about the Bethlehem comparison and that's something that we do all the time here for many purposes because it's such, as you know, a sister city. So this is in no way to misguide you or make an excuse, I'm just going to share information that I found and that you can use because I think you're on the right track with a lot of the comparisons. As you know, they are similar in a population size, but the one thing that kind of sets us apart is the square mileage that we have. Bethlehem is about 19 and a half square miles where the city of Scranton is 25 and a half square miles, which is about 30% larger than Bethlehem with the same population density or same population with more spread out density. And as you know, the biggest cost that any municipality has to their budget is services, police, fire, DPW. So, you know, when you increase the size, you'd have to increase, you know, the number of police to cover that, the number of firehouses, firemen and trucks, garbage trucks, employees that size. And now, I'm not saying it's a complete comparison, but if you up 30%, you would, the budget would go to about 101, which is still a little bit shy than what we have. Not all that would carry over, of course, I know, but it's just kind of to show you that there is going to be an incros, you know, a bigger increase with the size of the city. So I would start with, and something that I was working on before, was number of firehouses compared to how many firehouses, do we have active police officers per shift to the amount of police officers that we have per shift? And then you can kind of get your head around what the actual numbers are because it is, budget can be very intimidating and confusing when you're looking at it as just a document and not a living, breathing entity that you see on a daily basis. So I do agree with you there. So that's just some information from me to you to use and if it's something you already know, I'm sorry for wasting your time. If it's not, I hope there was some nugget of information that you could use to further dig because I do think you're on the right track. Something else that came up tonight was that long-term maintenance plan that we've been talking about for a while. One of the things that I would love to institute and it might be too late to do it this year, but something that maybe the new administration can look at, is to do a mandatory allocation for a long-term maintenance plan, which would come right out of the city budget. It would be a certain percentage of the, of a maintenance fund that we already have, a maintenance program that we already funded, certain percentage, a .05, a .7, something that would just perpetually increase until something is needed. And I would also like that stipulation to include something where the monies can only be taken out of that account unless it had council approval. That way, we know we would have the automatic oversight of the bidding process, who's in charge of the work, what work's going to be done. And for lack of a better word, for lack of a better word, it would, it would almost necessitate the communication between the administration and the council. Sometimes it's great, sometimes it's not so great, but this is something that we can do to make it more open and more, you know, something where it's just more transparent and I think that would be the way to go. Because more times than not, and it's very apparent to me now from being on council for almost four years, is when you don't have a long time keeper of buildings and properties and overall assets, more times than not, you get to kick, you kick the can down the road theory. You know, someone's only here for four years or eight years and it's, you know, and you hate to say it, but it turns into it's not my problem situation. And I would, I hate to say that that's the way it is, but look at the state of a lot of our assets. So I think that's how it's being treated. So I think that's why this long-term maintenance plan, it just can't be a budget item that could be tweaked or reduced. I think it would have to be something passed by council that'd have to be a certain percentage and have to be mandatory. Now, there's a lot of things that go into that. You know, I can hear Mr. Bolzoni right now going, oh my goodness, you know, there's something that we have to pay for. Well, there's a cost to everything. Are we going to pay now or are we going to pay later? Because one way or another, we're going to pay. So I think that's something that we need to take a hard look at, especially with come next budget time in the new administration, is let's put something in place for a mandatory long-term, mandatory allocation for long-term maintenance program. long-term, mandatory allocation for long-term maintenance program that is overseen by the city council when it comes time to draw those money out for certain funds. I think that would be a good usage of it. And that after time, you know, you might go three or four years without using it, which is great. That money just piles up and it stays there. It doesn't move. And then when you need it, you have it, and then it gets replenished back and forth. At least then you can actually get projects done without having to take it from other accounts. You know, is it a perfect plan? No, but it's something, it's a good starting point for us to discuss, and it's a lot better than what we have now. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, repealing Section 1, a file of the Council Number 12, 2018, of the City of Scranton and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures, by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Scranton, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, and amending Section 4, a file of the Council Number 64 of 2014, to reduce the fee to file an appeal with the Housing Board of Appeals based upon the type of matter at issue and to promote resolutions of appeals before proceeding to hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 64, 2014, and ordinance as amended entitled, an ordinance adopting the quality of life and violations ticket process in the city of Scranton, to be amended in Section 3 by deleting numbers 1 through 7, 20, 21, 25, 26, 28, and 29, to remove violations, and in Section 9 to reduce fines for certain violations, and in Section 10 to reduce the amount of citation fines for violations.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to that Item 5C be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I, again, appreciate the mayor coming in and explaining quite a few things as it relates to this legislation. First of all, I think this is a step in the right direction in the fact that when the mayor was in our caucus tonight, and one of the speakers brought this up as well, what they're really putting an emphasis on now is to give people a warning before they issue a ticket. So in the past, what would happen, and just as recent as I saw somebody making a complaint online, is that you'd have high grass or some other, some other citation, and you would get a hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred-dollar citation without being able to correct the problem before you had to go and pay the fine. So it became a thing of, you know, the city going out and penalizing people if they had a good excuse, if they were elderly, or they really couldn't get to it, or there were health issues, or, and so on and so forth. So according to Mayor Evans, what the city is now going to do, they have come up with a door hanger. So if a city inspector goes out and you have high grass or some other, some other penalty or you're doing something wrong, you'll get a hanger on your door, and you'll have forty-eight hours to correct the issue. Again, I think that's a step in the right direction. Some of the other improvements that he mentioned that I appreciated is the turnaround in permits being approved. Mayor Evans told us that, and I know from hearing so many complaints over the last few years, it was taking a few weeks to get a permit approved. That's now down, according to him, to a few days. So that's a step in the right direction. One of the things that I was really pleased to hear from the mayor is that they will no longer be accepting cash in the Licensing and Inspections Department. Again, another step in the right direction. So the mayor said somewhere in the span of two or three weeks, they will be unveiling a credit card program, so you'll be able to pay with the credit card. I think the crux of this legislation is to make it simpler, easier to enforce, and, you know, the goal of this is not to collect money or to penalize people, it's to change the behavior, and it's to try to improve the properties around the city. The thing that I did mention to the mayor and to my colleagues in the caucus is I do hope that in the future, the city will be able to come up with some sort of program, so when a city inspector goes out and identifies an issue such as high grass, and actually finds out that the person is elderly and cannot do it, and cannot afford it, that we would be able to provide them some avenue then to go to an organization or a charity of some sort to get the help that they need. So I agree with what Mayor Evans is trying to do here. Instead of just handing somebody a three-hundred-dollar fine, let's find out what the problem is, and then let's try to work with the person to solve it, instead of, you know, driving them away, or then they go to the magistrate, and then that drags on for a couple weeks. So again, I want to thank him for coming and clearing quite a few things up, and I think the Licensing and Inspections Department is starting to move in the right direction. I think this legislation is a good first step. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute a deed of easement and right-of-way between the city of Scranton and Lace Building Affiliates LP, granting to Lace Affiliates LP the easement, right-of-way, and rights as are set forth below, with respect to the property which deed of easement and right-of-way shall be in the form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution, amending resolution Number 104, 2019, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a Beautiful Blocks Program proposal by and between the city of Scranton and Neighborworks, Northeastern Pennsylvania, to encourage groups of neighbors to improve their homes by providing matching grants for exterior improvements, to increase the grant amount of the Beautiful Blocks proposal by and between the city of Scranton and Neighborworks, Northeastern Pennsylvania, and authorize disbursement of such funds.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Again, I have to commend the mayor and the administration for making this move. I think that this program that actually then Councilman Evans had proposed, and looking at Oswego, New York, who did basically the same thing a few years ago, this was an innovative, out-of-the-box type of program that finally puts money back into the neighborhoods. We see so much over the last few years about putting money into the downtown, and that is so important. But this is a program that gives money back to the people who are living in the neighborhoods. And from all accounts, and from what we heard from the mayor tonight, this program has been a huge success. So by putting now one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars of the remaining rental registration escrow, this program is only going to expand, and I can't wait to see what it looks like in a few years. Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution, amending resolution Number 127, 2019, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a settlement agreement by and between UGI Utilities Incorporated, the city of Scranton, and Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, to settle litigation filed against the city and PUC by UGI in order to remove the Pennsylvania Utility Commission, PUC, from the settlement agreement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction?
Tim, if I may. I was waiting for Bill.
Oh, no, I'm good now. I don't have anymore.
Because I had to fill in Bill. I came to this ballgame a little late, so I understand the solicitor, Assistant City Solicitor Joe Price Jr. came in at an earlier date regarding this lawsuit. And before I approved a settlement, I really wanted to make sure that I understood what was the genesis of the lawsuit, what happened during the discovery and deposition process, and why, in fact, it was being settled. And while a lot of that is attorney-client privilege, and I can't get into it, I can tell you with my twenty-eight years of experience that I do, in fact, think that this is a good case for us to resolve. Joe Price Jr. explained to me very clearly why that was the case. One thing that did catch my eye was the amount of the one-hundred-thousand dollars. But what I was glad to hear is there was no outlay of money by the city for that purpose. Joe was able to get this done for us over a five-year period of time with only a credit to UGI in the amount of twenty thousand over five years. So basically, no outlay of money on behalf of the city, because that did have me somewhat concerned if that was going to be the case, and also that we were not going to pay any costs or attorney's fees, which, again, can be the case in a lot of litigation. So I was pleased about that. The other thing that caught my eye that I think is very favorable going forward, and again, you're always interested in when you have a legal resolution, how can we prevent this from having, happening again, is he advised me that going forward, we're just going to adopt Penn Doc guidelines relative to pave cuts and other issues, and that also going forward, UGI is going to provide a designated operations representative for the city, which I think is a great idea, that can be a contact for all matters regarding paving and gas services to Scranton residents and any other UGI project. This should facilitate better communication between the parties on any issues going forward. It's not to say we may not have to look at other things operationally or in terms of management, but I am, I do understand why we are settling this, and I want to thank him for his time that he spent with me, because, of course, I had a lot of questions on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 70, 2019, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement, and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-19 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine-hundred fourteen dollars.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 138, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Robert Kuiper, 406 Roanoke Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kuiper's effective date will be July 26, 2019. Mr. Kuiper's term will expire with the term of Mayor Wayne E. Evans.
As temporary chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 139, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Raymond J. Kelly, 10 Fawnwood Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kelly's effective date will be July 26, 2019. Mr. Kelly's term will expire with the term of Mayor Wayne E. Evans.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 140, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Jack Lascombe, 3115 Parallel Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Lascombe's effective date will be July 26, 2019. Mr. Lascombe's term will expire with the term of Mayor Wayne E. Evans.
As temporary chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 141, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Donald Walsh, 1006 Derby Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board for an additional five-year term effective August 13, 2019. Mr. Walsh's prior term expired on November 24, 2018, and was held over until August 13, 2019. His new term will expire on November 24, 2023.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 142, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Michael Salerno, 1200 Bryn Mawr Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Scranton Parking Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Salerno's current term expired on June 1, 2019, and was held over to July 31, 2019. His new term will expire on June 1, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 143, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Paul D'Antona, 333 North Sumner Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. D'Antona's prior term expired on June 17, 2019, and was held over until July 31, 2019. His new term will expire on June 17, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 144, 2019, authorizing appointment of Karen Bazari, 102 Short Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Ms. Bazari is being appointed to a four-year term, which will expire on July 30, 2023.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 145, 2019, authorizing appointment of John Cowder, 1614 North Webster Avenue, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18509, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Mr. Cowder is being appointed to a five-year term, which will expire on July 30, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7H.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn? Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 147, 2019, authorizing appointment of Jamie Hailstone Esquire, 1201 Olive Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective August 13, 2019. Attorney Hailstone is being appointed to a four-year term which will expire on August 13, 2023.
As temporary chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 148, 2019, authorizing appointment of Brian Lanahan Esquire, 101 Stonegate Drive, Waverly, Pennsylvania, 18471, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Attorney Lanahan is being appointed to a four-year term which will expire on July 30, 2023.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7J.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 149, 2019, authorizing appointment of Betsy Moylan, 1502 Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Ms. Moylan is being appointed to a two-year term which will expire on July 30, 2021.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7K.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7K legally and lawfully adopted.
7L for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 150, 2019, authorizing appointment of Evy Rifalco McNulty, 7, excuse me, 625 Mulkey Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Ms. Rifalco McNulty is being appointed to a five-year term which will expire on July 30, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7L.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7L legally and lawfully adopted.
7M for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 151, 2019, authorizing appointment of Ann Salerno, 1200 Bryn Mawr Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to serve as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority effective July 30, 2019. Ms. Salerno is being appointed to a four-year term which will expire on July 30, 2023.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7M.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7M legally and lawfully adopted.
7N for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption Resolution Number 152, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a cooperation agreement by and between the Lackawanna County Land Bank and the City of Scranton for the demolition of certain land bank-owned, blighted, and/or condemned properties.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the community, Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7N.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7N legally and lawfully adopted.
7O for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 153, 2019, authorizing appointment of Amanda C. Lara, MS, 223 Prospect Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Human Relations Commission effective August 23, 2019. Ms. Lara will be replacing Hal Donahue, whose term expired on September 4, 2018. Ms. Lara's term will be effective immediately and expire on August 23, 2022.
As temporary chairperson on the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7O.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7O legally and lawfully adopted.
7P previously tabled, 7Q for, excuse me, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 155, 2019, appointment of Andrew Heller, 801 Stafford Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Board of Ethics for a two-year term effective August 29, 2019. His term will expire on August 31, 2021.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7Q.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. But so by finally appointing a majority of this ethics board, this is the last step to finally implement a process, a process that sets a high bar for ethical conduct for not only city employees, but also for city-elected officials. Corruption and pay-to-play politics have held the city back for far too long, and is long overdue to finally begin to change that negative perception of this great city, which is why